Could we please not interrupt tonight while the board is conducting the meeting? Because it is very hard to hear when everybody, uh, thank you.
Okay, um, so.
Dan, one point of order, some point of order, that people identify themselves when they are speaking with those of us on Zoom.
We will try. Okay, uh, first is Karen Caranda. We asked, the board asked her to come, uh, two weeks ago, she was here. We asked her to come and to give her presentation on the, uh, her talks on the vaccine. So if you would give your presentation and then when she is done, we will be open for a couple of questions.
Now, remember this, Karen has been invited by myself as an agenda member, not just a visitor. So let's hear her out, please.
If I have, I would like to have a copy of everything, the data, so that you have a good reference.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I was here two weeks ago and requested that the vaccine information that was presented in a previous meeting be stricken from the minutes. It was decided at the last meeting, uh, not to strike those records, but to, uh, that I could come back this time and read something into the record. Thank you. So, uh, John.
The vaccine information was presented, but, um, at this select board meeting four weeks ago, Dan Potvin was the one who was speaking. I am, he, I am sure, uh, he cares deeply about our town, but he is not a scientist and does not have the qualifications to carefully evaluate COVID-19 data and offer a recommendation whether or not people should be vaccinated in our town. And I care really deeply about this town. I think this sets a dangerous precedent if someone listens to this information that was presented by him, that looks like official information coming from the town's select board, and chooses as a result to follow this guidance, not to get vaccinated, and then gets serious ill or tragically dies. I felt compelled to come forward at the last board meeting, and I'm back again now, about this, as other people not familiar with this kind of science could easily be misguided by the statements that he made, especially as he has referenced a lot of people and supposed facts. I have a PhD in genetics. I was a lab head in a leading biotech in the Boston area focusing on human genome cloning and analysis. My husband Mike and I retired here a bit over four years ago and love this town every year even more. I feel I have the qualifications to examine Dan Potvin's statements in this vaccine information section just for scientific accuracy. Based on what I have looked at and fact-checked, it is scientifically inaccurate. At, uh, two weeks ago, I requested that this be stricken from the minutes based on this. I have not added in any additional COVID vaccine information today. Laura Sibilia has volunteered as representative of Bennington and Winton, um, districts to provide accurate COVID, um, virus and vaccine information to our town, which I think is the perfect person to do this. So what I have done is I have, I'm gonna read what was said by Dan, and then I will read my response to each section, one section at a time. Uh, the first statement was Dan Potvin wanted to get information about the vaccine out to the townspeople. He suggested people consider signing the Great Barrington Declaration, which has over 50,000 signatures from scientists, doctors, and medical personnel. And my response to this, this document was drawn up following a meeting hosted by a libertarian think tank, American Institute for Economic Research, named the Great Barrington Declaration after the Massachusetts town in which it was drafted. The paper was signed by scientists and health experts. But a British broadcast station and other stations have researched this and found that many of those who signed this letter online used fake names, including Dr. Person Fake Name and Dr. Johnny Bananas. Okay, there was no, there was no way to fact-check whether the scientists' names that were being put on were actually the real people or not. When questioned, when the people that wrote, uh, drafted this declaration were questioned about this, the signatures and all search functions on their website, based on these names, were then immediately made private. The plan was put together by three stock scientists, yes, from prestigious universities, Oxford, Stanford, and Harvard. But none of these three have published any peer-reviewed studies about the coronavirus. And some have advocated for herd immunities over lockdowns for many months, telling policymakers that the virus isn't deadly at all. One of the authors of this document indicated that we will achieve this herd immunity with only 10% of the population. Since over 10% of the population has already had COVID, um, that means we should have herd immunity now, and we don't. The CDC has said that we need to have at least 70 to 90% in the population to bring the pandemic under control. Sinatra Gupta has described the Great Barrington Declaration as existing outside of politics. Yet the network of financing behind its sponsor, the AIER, bankrolled by the Koch Foundation brothers, seems to demonstrate exactly the opposite. The declaration appears to subsist in a political lobbying network that is routinely involved in denying the risks to human health from powerful industries such as fossil fuels and tobacco. It is not surprising then that the scientific content of the declaration has been thoroughly challenged by many, many leading experts. Professor Jeremy Rossman, honorary senior lecturer in Virology University of Kent, stated, "The Great Barrington Declaration attempts to alleviate these impacts by promoting herd immunity and the protection of vulnerable populations." Unfortunately, this declaration ignores three critical aspects that could result in significant impacts to health and lives. First, we still do not know if herd immunity is even possible to achieve. Herd immunity relies on lasting immunological protection from coronavirus reinfection. We have heard. Second, the declaration focuses only on the risk of death from COVID, but ignores the growing awareness of long COVID that many healthy young adults with mild COVID infections are experiencing and long-term disability. Third, countries that have foregone lockdown restrictions in favor of personal responsibility and focused protection of the elderly, such as Sweden, were not able to successfully protect the vulnerable. While there is clearly a need to support and ease the physical and mental health burdens many are suffering under, the proposed declaration is both unlikely to see and puts the long-term health of many at risk. Second statement, Dan said, "Dr. Garrett Fandon Bosch, a leading scientist in vaccines and immunology, gave an interview on High Wire." I, my comment, I did listen to the entire one-hour presentation that he gave. The interviewer was a prominent, uh, person in, I'm going to say, the anti-vaxxer community. And so, uh, it's my opinion that it was very one-sided. Dan also mentioned Dr. Sheri Tenpenny and Dr. Vermin Coleman from England, and said these doctors and information can be found on breiten.com. The quoted website, breiten.com, points to a shopping site for women's luxury bags and jewelry, so that is not accurate. Sheri Tenpenny, that he quoted, is an American anti-vaccination activist who supports the disproved theories that vaccines cause autism. She has a degree in osteopathic medicine, nothing about vaccines. Since 2017, Tenpenny and her business partner Matthew Hunt have taught a six-week, $623 course called Mastering Vaccine Info Bootcamp, designed to quote "sew seeds of doubt regarding public health information." During the course, Tenpenny explains her views on immune system and vaccines, even though she has no background in this. And Hunt instructs participants on how best to use persuasion tactics in conversations with others to communicate this information. Vermin Coleman, who he also referenced, is an English conspiracy theorist and anti-vaccination activist. He has publicly claimed AIDS is a complete hoax, writing, quote, "It is now my considered view that the disease we know as AIDS probably doesn't exist and has never existed," end quote. Such claims have been completely rejected by the medical community. He is a novelist who writes on topics related to human health, politics, and animal issues. Coleman's medical claims have been widely discredited for many years and have been described by the medical community as pseudo-scientific. He was formerly a newspaper columnist and then became a general practitioner. He has been under investigation for multiple years, until finally his medical license was revoked in 2016. He has since been designated an honorary doctor at the International Open University in Sri Lanka. He has also publicly stated multiple times in February 2021 that doctors or nurses who administer the COVID vaccine will be tried in normal trials as work trials. The next comment was from Dan, was, he said, "Our natural immune system has K cells, which naturally fight infection." He said, "Since the virus has a 99.91% survival rate, it shows that your natural immune system works well." These scientists are coming forward with information indicating that the coronavirus vaccines will suppress our natural immune system, which is currently nonspecific and created to fight an unknowable amount of viruses and make it specific to only fight the specific coronavirus strain that came out last March. My comments, since neither of these two people are scientists or doctors with any expertise in virology or epidemiology, they are putting forth this information with no scientific backing at all. People receive vaccines for all kinds of childhood and other illnesses. Getting a vaccine for polio, for example, does not shut down your entire immune system to any other virus. Second, the survival rate he stated for COVID is not 99.91%. We have currently lost more than 562,000 souls in our country alone. The death percentage rate varies by country, but the US is currently listed as 2% that have been affected will also die from the disease. This is 22 times higher than the death rate that he stated. The use of the term "K cells" is completely incorrect. There are NK cells, which are cytotoxic lymphocytes, critical to the natural immune system. However, due to a genetic variation where 4% of the population naturally lack the activation receptor, and also 30% of the population, this receptor is only partially available. It has been shown recently that people with partial or total absence of this receptor are most likely to develop severe COVID in any age class, and irrespective of age or comorbid pre-existing conditions. Next, Dan stated, "The vaccine antibodies will become dominant and will block your own antibody cells. As the virus mutates and creates new strains, the vaccine antibodies will not fight against other strains. We will lose our innate immune system. The vaccine has long lived, and once you take it, you can't get it out of your body." My response, viruses like COVID-19 and any other virus mutate all the time, another reason to get vaccinated. Viruses can't mutate if they aren't replicating in infection, helping to prevent the emergence of new variants in the population. Data so far has suggested that the current vaccines prevent, uh, cases of some of the variants, as well as severe cases, um, of infection and death. The Pfizer and Moderna mRNA-based vaccines can be tweaked rapidly to address emerging variants, and in fact, Moderna already has one in clinical trials for the South African variant. This can easily lead to a booster shot for variants later on. Next, Dan stated, "Dr. Bosch and Dr. Tenpenny fear is what's called gain-of-function, which is something bioweapon labs study when making a biological weapon. Not only will the vaccine hinder your natural immune system in its effectiveness to fight other viruses, including other coronavirus strains, but each vaccinated person will give the virus a gain-of-function, which will make the coronavirus stronger, more deadly, and spread more rapidly." He also said, "In the US, we are up to 2 million vaccinations per day and pushing for 3 million per day. Israel has already vaccinated 5 million out of a total population of 9." Dr. Bosch and Dr. Tenpenny say this vaccine is an extinction-level scientist that has been unleashed on human race. They have not done, he also said, "They have not done animal studies in clinical trials because they have been working on mRNA vaccines since 2004, and every time a vaccinated animal is later exposed to a new strain of the virus, it dies." I'm gonna say, I cannot find any published data whatsoever to support the animal studies claim. Next, he stated, "India has already banned all coronavirus vaccines." This is my comment, this is completely incorrect. Currently, two vaccines are approved in India. One is the Oxford-AstraZeneca vaccine, which is being distributed under the local name of Covashio. And the second is called Covaxin, developed by Virot Biotech, a drug maker based in India. Dan further said, "Dr. Tenpenny said this vaccine could slowly attack up to 28 organs in your body over a 3 to 18-month period, and by the time you come down with some sort of liver dysfunction, they won't connect it to the vaccine." My comment, it is not the vaccine that has been shown to attack organs in the body. Rather, the COVID-19 virus itself affects much more than simply just the lungs. It has been shown to cause micro blood clots in multiple organs, causing subsequent impairment long-term in the heart, lungs, kidney, liver, pancreas, spleen, and brain. Last comment that he made, Dan Potvin wants all people to have access to this information. He hopes people will choose not to take the vaccine. Dan Potvin said, "The best thing you can do is to beef up your immune system, take vitamin D, and eat healthy. A strong, healthy immune system is the best way to fight the virus." My comment, of course, you should always strive to eat a healthy diet. However, this alone will not protect you from catching COVID. It's my sincere hope that this information will encourage anyone on the fence to please get vaccinated. I have one more thing, uh, and this is from Johns Hopkins Medical Center, the Senior Director of Infection Prevention, the Director of Johns Hopkins Critical Event Preparedness and Response. And this is directly quoted from them. Myth, the side effects of COVID vaccine are dangerous. Fact, the COVID vaccine can have side effects, but the vast majority are very short-term, not serious or dangerous. Myth, the COVID vaccine enters your cells and changes your DNA. Fact, two COVID-19 vaccines, Pfizer and Moderna, are designed to help your body's immune system fight the virus. The messenger RNA does enter the cells, but not the nucleus of the cells where DNA resides. The mRNA does its job by causing the cell to just make proteins to simulate the immune system and then quickly breaks down without affecting your DNA. Myth, the mRNA technology used to make the COVID vaccine is brand-new. Fact, the mRNA technology behind these coronavirus vaccines has been in development for almost two decades. Vaccine makers created the technology to help them respond quickly to a new pandemic illness such as COVID-19. Myth, the COVID vaccine was developed with or contains controversial substances. Pfizer and Moderna vaccines contain mRNA and other normal vaccine ingredients, such as fats, which protect the mRNA solves, as well as a small amount of sugar. These COVID vaccines were not developed using fetal tissue. They do not contain any materials such as implants, microchips, or tracking devices, as some people have said. I'm not adding anything to this. Uh, my expertise is in genome, uh, cloning, DNA sequencing. Okay, I am not a vaccine, a virologist. And I will refer to Laura Sibilia, who has offered to provide accurate information to our town. And I, and I would recommend that people in town, um, take that advice. Thank you.
Karen, thank you very much for presenting your side.
Thank you.
We've heard Dan's two weeks ago, and now yours tonight. And we hope people are more informed and make their own decision. We've given them, uh, food for thought, places to go.
Don't I get a rebuttal?
Very little, because Dan, we've spent a lot of time on this.
I could talk on this all by myself.
I know, I know, but this is not really a debate, I know.
No, I know, and that, that, oh, come.
Point of order.
I said, oh, well, don't you.
Point of order.
Uh, Nancy, Nancy.
If the meeting is not meeting, that could not be debated, point of order.
Nancy.
Dan Potvin has the floor.
That's not true. But Nancy, uh, when a board member asks and you call down through the chair and you recognize it, could you please tell the rest of the people, because there's so many people here, to not interrupt?
Thank you. Mike.
It's reminded by law that if you ask for point of order, you must listen to it.
What's that?
You've got to hear whatever the point of order is.
They, if, we heard it.
So, look at actually, you know, my presentation a month ago, just what's coming out on a daily basis is proving what I said. Of four vaccines in this country, two are already been sidelined because of danger. The whole argument in this whole thing from the get-go has been safe and effective. Last meeting, there were three people in here, including you two, that were vaccinated, all wearing masks. And I think you were wearing two masks.
Yes, I was.
Okay.
But, but not.
There's the effectiveness, if they're effective, right? I'm a lumberjack, I mean, if this vaccine is effective, why the hell do I need to social distance and wear a mask which is not effective in the first place? And that's from CDC reports going back to 2004. Those masks are not effective, and I could bring in reports from CDC and WHO, studies done by them, that those masks do not work.
So I think the, if I can speak now, I, I just want, I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah.
I think the point of having Karen come in was that there was more, just my opinion, of a concern that the board was using a platform. Mike, you brought that up.
That's correct.
And that really set something in me that said, I don't want to ever see that as a, the board using a platform to get out information, whether they feel it's right or wrong. Uh, so that's why I invited Karen to come and, and put her side of the story. I agree with Nancy, that this meeting is not the place to have a debate. I'm very grateful that Dan presented his information, and I'm grateful he presented yours, gives me and many others something to think about. I think there's a, a reason for a debate. I would love to have another place set up that the two of you could debate and people would want to listen more about it. That would, I'd love to see something like that, that'd be great. Uh, it sounds like you have a very high background of medical information, although you admitted that vaccines are not your, your forte. Dan, you were a, what, a biochemist, something like that?
Bio, N B C specialists, nuclear biological chemist.
Okay, so that's pretty impressive, I'm just a lowly machinist, so I don't. But it, the place for the debate is not at this meeting, and I agree. So I think the information's out there, and I don't think we should. I agree, actually agree with Helen, that we shouldn't have a long-term debate about this. But if I was you, I'd definitely stand in, up against a lumberjack at a debate. I'd go, why not, you know, he's just a lumberjack.
So I'm just kidding, Dan.
I'm just kidding. But, no, I mean, it.
I might bring a couple of other lumberjacks with me.
The bottom line is just, I think that there's information out there and sources that we are all intelligent adults to go look and find that source and dig into it and make our own decisions. I'm glad that the government hasn't forced people to do things. I hope that it doesn't happen. And I think we should all have that right to hear and make decisions. That's my opinion.
My opinion too. Can we move on from this discussion? Mike?
Can I just add a few comments?
Just shortly.
I just want to say, first off, I don't wear the mask out of lack of confidence.
Thank you, please.
My name is Mike Caranda, uh, we live in, through the lane in Stanford. I don't wear the mask because of lack of confidence in the vaccine. I wear it out of respect for the people around me, that they have confidence that I'm not going to infect them, that they know that at least I'm providing some level of protection. I think, uh, some of this, I, I just made a few comments about where I stand. I think I've in sync on a number of issues here. I think, um, related to the vaccine, a lot of stuff wasn't done right, okay? I think we'll all acknowledge that. You know, there's a lot of government overreach and businesses and things, and, and we, I personally would rather see, uh, less mandates and more personal responsibility if we had to shape things in that direction. That's where I would prefer to be. But in my mind, with the vaccine, that's one of the few bright spots that I see in this whole COVID situation. I like my wife, and I agree with my wife, I'm a smart guy, I agree with my wife.
You better.
So we're, we're, we're both, uh, I'm a biochemist, and I worked in the pharmaceutical and biotech industries for 25 years. And I'm familiar with, with all the, and I, and I bring that up. And I bring that up not to be a smartass, but just because I view the world differently. I view these articles, what I see differently than you do. Because I lived that world, and I was a part of it for quite a number of years. And I, you know, I filed FDA documents, and I'm part of that whole process. So it is very stringent. And, you know, even though I haven't been following it to the level my wife has, I haven't been following the vaccine development and through the whole process. And when many people thought it wasn't going to happen, I thought it would. Because I think a lot of people did things in parallel. And I think when the government took off the monetary risk for going ahead with manufacturing, great, we'll go ahead. We don't have to wait for the clinical data to come in. We'll just go ahead. So I think a lot of, you know, when people say cutting corners, a lot of stuff was done in parallel, I think, to develop those vaccines. And, you know, granted, I'm not a virologist, and I can't speak with absolute authority on any of this stuff. But I know a lot of people in the industry. I know a lot of people in healthcare. And in my circle, every scientist, people, it's a no-brainer. You know, we're not even questioning it. And, you know, like I said, but I come from a different place. I come from a different angle. And I know this information is impossible. I mean, I don't see the point in a debate. I mean, the information we get, everybody gets it from Google. I mean, we're Google-ing everything. And all that information, you know, self-proclaimed experts get the same level of authority on Google as somebody that's a, you know, a demonstrated world-class authority. And then color that with all the political crap that's going on. I mean, look at where we're at. So my recommendation is, I listen to the people I know. I listen to people close to me. I listen to healthcare professionals. If they have confidence, and I just recommend to people out there, instead of having a debate, go to your doctor. Talk to your doctor. Your doctor's in charge of your healthcare. See what he thinks. Read what you can read. Understand what you can understand. And make your own damn decision on what to do with this thing.
Thank you, Mike. Very good.
Can I ask him just two quick questions?
Karen?
Yeah, so you said that you have your ma... Did you have your vaccine?
Yes.
Yes, so you said you have your max mask down to protect us from us?
No, out of respect that you know that... You're like, "I have the vaccine, huh? That I've had the vaccine, so how do you know?" I mean, I'm just... Plus, I think it sets up... It sets us a kind of atmosphere that everybody should be wearing a mask. You know, I want to pull for that atmosphere. I don't want to say masks off. You know, I want to still send the message that we should be wearing them when it's appropriate. I wear the mask when I go into a public store and I'm in contact with people I don't know, or I'm in contact with the public. I will continue to wear it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. We all have our opinions.
I would still like... I'm throwing this out. My buddy came up from Boston this past weekend. He works for Pfizer. He's high up in Pfizer. Okay, and the first thing he told me, he got his vaccine. I said, "Well, I don't kick you out of the house. I already said you could stay here for the weekend." All right, but we debated all weekend long, all right? And I finally gave him an urgent quote to read from LifeSiteNews.com. Thursday, they interviewed Mike Eden, former Pfizer... You got that? We clarified that, though. But I had said the former Vice President of Pfizer, who was in... My friend knew him. He's like, "Yeah, he was head of the..."
He was head of the allergy department?
He was head of the whole scientific research department.
For allergy and respiratory diseases.
And so he just came out with an interview, which makes everything I talked about a month ago seem like child's play. And he talked about, you mentioned Moderna, they are... These top-up vaccines are coming. They're already designing them. There's billions already in the works, okay? And so publicly, you know, the survival rates I got, those are up the CD website. I'm not an idiot. I go to the sources, okay? 99.9% survival rate for 0 to 19 years old. You shut down... They shut down schools across the country, sports, everything, for a 99.9% survival rate. And now they're talking vaccinating those kids.
Point of order. Is this on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Karen was on the agenda.
Thank you.
I thought Karen's hat was on the agenda.
Dan, please continue.
The discussion was on the agenda. Karen and Dan's discussion.
So, I want to challenge you to a public debate, not at the select board meeting. We can do it out here. You can bring Fauci. You can bring anybody you want to zoom in. And I could bring one or two other lumberjacks that got some scientific background. How's that? You can go on. This is like a win-win.
So do you have a degree in science?
No.
No?
Can we move on then? You guys can set up a debate whenever you want, or let's continue, but...
That's a great idea, Dan.
Your information is out there, Karen. You can change it.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you for letting me read this into the record, okay? I'm going to say I'm actually not interested in debating whether people should get the vaccine or not.
No, not debate whether they should get it, just debate the... We could debate the masks, the social distancing. We could lead up to the vaccine in the same order that everything came our way.
Uh, I'm not going to... Not interested, but...
So the people have heard both sides.
Both sides. Let them know.
I just wanted to say what I wanted to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know you have already written an email asking me to debate, and I decline.
Again, that's why I invited you, so there's... There's fairness. That's what I see.
Mike, I would like to know if the select board would consider asking the citizens and the select board itself to limit the subject matter of the select board to town business alone. And I think that this vaccine issue debate has taken up a lot of town's select board time. I understand the importance of it, and I appreciate that Dan is willing to do whatever he wants to do as a debate something else. But I could think of a few things that I'd like to bring to the select board. Like, I would like us to be a town that votes for the right to vote and make it a U.S. constitutional right-to-vote town. I don't think it's appropriate for me to bring that to the select board. But I could think of lots of other things I'd like to bring to the select board. I don't think it's appropriate. So I would like the select board to take a stand individually on how you feel about asking people to not bring outside information that's a national debate, or an argument, or this side versus that side, and that we stick to town business.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Do we have another hand raised here? I can't tell.
So I guess what I need to know is, can I come to the select board in two weeks with my topics that I would like to write about and submit on national issues that are a concern to me?
So...
Or we...
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Mike, do not?
Are you finished, Helen? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, I just want to know if this is going to go on and you're going to allow this, or if we can end it.
When we decide, and this is again an opinion, when we decide what's town business, that's a very open definition. Town... Coronavirus is a town business subject because it is worldwide. So it is part of the town. Putting a bench out on the yard and getting rocks from all over the world, well, that... Should we only get rocks from the town? You know, I mean, to me, it's up to the board to decide what we want to talk about. But as far as a person coming as a visitor, we've never stopped the freedom of speech and asked a person, "Well, no, that's nothing to do with the town." Shut up. We've let them talk for their five-plus minutes every single meeting within the two terms that I've been asked, Lemon. Karen, on the other hand, was invited and put on the agenda by myself. That's a separate issue. If you were to get on the agenda and have an agenda issue, I would have no problem spending all night listening to your opinion about a subject matter. So I am very big on constitution and about giving people free speech.
And the board...
And let me just say one more thing. I'm sorry. About that right-to-vote, we are a constitutional house. We voted on that, on all the constitution, not just a little bit of it.
Everybody votes?
Okay.
Yeah, here's what I'm asking is, it seems like this particular topic was brought up not by a hearing of the visitor at the speed of free speech, but by an elected official of the town whose job is to represent the town and decide town business. What I'd like to know is, would you please make a decision that town business will be what the select board brings to the topic? And, I mean, I could bring, you know, should we be a blast night matter of town? Should we be a Confederate flag town? Should we be, you know, there are lots of things every two weeks that a whole bunch of people could bring that none of these is not the town's select board. So I'm just asking... I'm just asking if the select board can make a decision that they are going to stick to town business.
This specific subject matter was brought up by Dan under New Business as Town Business. He felt this was town business. And that's Dan as a selectman's right to bring that up under the agenda of New Business. If you were a visitor, you would not be talking under New Business. You'd be talking under Hearing of Visitors. And there is a section in our agenda for that subject matter. And if you wanted to bring up any of those subject matters that you just mentioned, none of the board members would say, "No, you're not allowed to speak." So I would still be in favor of allowing any of board members to bring up subject matter. And if the chair wants to say, "That's enough," it's up to her to say, "That's enough." We beat a dead horse to death. I do believe that this didn't go any longer than a lot of other subject matters that we've had controversial subject matters in this town. Dan gave his 15 minutes, and we allowed Karen to come in and speak. And I don't know how long it was. It didn't seem like it was that long at all. I was very interested in what she had to say. And I think that, again, I am really against taking away free speech. And if it takes a little bit longer, you know, it is where it is. So we're here a little bit longer. That's what we ran as select board members for. I'm not looking at the clock going, "Well, you know, I got to go to another meeting," although I do. I'm not telling everybody to hurry up. Matter of fact, I would tell you right now, out of all the board members, I bet you if they were to vote on who speaks the most, I'd probably win that.
You would win.
I'm a close second to that.
Bill Levine?
Just quickly to... We have place and time for some of these subjects and some of the concerns, other concerns that people have. There's a place to bring them up under any and other, you know, any and all other business at town meeting for one place, as well as bringing it up under visitors' meetings here. And warrant articles were open for these things to be offered. And this year was relatively easy to get the number of votes to put it formally on town meeting. There's still a venue and a place for these.
I think Nancy did a fine job on this subject matter. It did... I don't think this got out of hand at all. I think that it was very fair, and it went pretty smooth. People, I think, maybe assumed that it was going to get out of hand. But it seems like it went pretty nice.
How's the minutes?
The minutes?
Okay.
Do you want me to move on or is everything changed?
Ruth, you also?
Um, I actually have a couple of questions. Um, when there was controversy here about the governor and so on and so forth, what was that all about? Can you inform me?
This is coming back in November.
Yeah.
That's all gone by. Read the minutes. We're done. Come on, Ruth.
The reason I'm asking, I cannot take the vaccine.
Okay.
Because I have anaphylaxis
Okay.
to the ingredients.
Okay.
And I've also had the blood clotting situation. So I am out completely for everything. My concern is that the quarantine sign at the state line... I'm supposed to stay within the state of Vermont, according to the governor. I have been caught twice going over this mountain up here, where I had to turn around, and one time I almost had an accident. I am not going to go over that mountain just so I can stay in the state of Vermont and do the errands that I need to do to go to Bennington that has a higher COVID rate than North Adams. So my concern as a Stanford resident with no services, I would like to be able to, and I've already written the governor. It isn't like I haven't done my part. I've done my part. I'm asking for the board to stand up for people that need to cross that border down there, to do non-essential trips and be safe.
I'll stand up. I'll stand up right here, but I can't guarantee you wouldn't be arrested. I can't... You know what I mean? The governor gives his orders and stuff, and...
But he doesn't realize that we have no services here.
He realizes all that, Ruth. He's not in... Well, watch the clock.
We are dragged apart by mountains here.
I understand that, Ruth.
And we're five miles from North Adams.
I understand that. We fought with the governor. We started suing the governor over the governor's guidelines. As of now, they're not enforcing it. So do what you need to do when they start... If they start to enforce it, we'll have them...
Rallying going, "Free Ruth West."
Yeah, yeah, "Free Ruth" if they arrest you.
Not trying to be in front of it, but this is where I really agree with Helen is, this is where the town, town business part of it, our hands are tied. This is a state matter. That governor and whoever else decided to make those orders, we actually tried, we want to inspire and exhaust our ability to get things changed. He's... You know, the governor made his orders. We can't twist his arm and change his words.
But have you actually...
So there's really, it's out of the town's hands.
Have you tried to negotiate with the governor? That's my question.
No, we have not. So just...
There is more to go.
I'm only asking for help.
I understand.
And if I had children and don't have a babysitter, they have to quarantine for 14 days.
I'll tell you this. If you can get the governor to come down to this table, I'll negotiate with him. Okay? You get him to come down, we'll negotiate.
And voting will be the next day from 10 to 7 in the gym?
In the gym. Anybody who'd like to come and count when the polls close at 7, we'd love to have counters.
And it'll be the same procedure as the November election in the gym, one door out the other?
Yeah, we'll have the precautions also.
Okay. And you have hired people to work the cleaners?
I have two old workers plus two disinfectants that will be there all day, disinfecting in between orders.
Okay. I guess that's it for town meeting. Bill, can you think of anything else? We've covered everything. Trying whatever we can do.
I think we have. The people who don't want to come on Tuesday, they can get ballots and deposit them here in the slot.
Right.
How does that work? At what time can they deposit ballots, Phil?
Right up until 7.
Okay.
As long as I can have them in hand. The hard part is, we're running out of time to mail it to them, so I really...
Well, they could drive them off, though.
They may have to come and get them.
The problem is, they'll have to come and get them Friday or Monday.
Okay.
So if someone mails them Friday, and you don't, for some reason, they don't come in, they don't come in.
They just don't bring it in. They're not counting.
It's their responsibility to have it back here by 7 o'clock Tuesday.
And I can mail them to people, but I cannot, like, hand you your dads or your moms. They would have to come in personally.
He wouldn't?
I can mail it out tomorrow. Or I can have two Justice of Peace deliver the ballot to them.
Because he knows they're on rush. He's not walking.
Yeah, that's an option, that we do deliver ballots if it's...
The J C's can deliver them.
I'll get them. What will we do with the walker? I'll have to bring him in, though, for the voting.
I think Lori might... I think Laura might make an exception to kind of grieve him. I don't know, oh, I shouldn't have said that, because maybe that's not legal.
People, no, people have voted from their cars. If they just pulled in, they can go from their car.
Okay.
Take them on a field trip.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Brooks?
Hi, I just, I think there's confusion about how to pick up absentee ballots because the office is unofficially. So what's the procedure?
So most people have called or emailed a request for an absentee ballot and I have been mailing absentee ballots to people for, since we were able to.
Can they come and pick it up at the window?
They can come and pick it up at the window. And most people call just to make sure I'm here. Tomorrow, I'll be here from 8:00 to 12:00. They want to come in on Monday, call Monday morning and I'll arrange a time to make sure I'm here if they want to pick up a ballot. As long as I receive it back by Tuesday before 7:00, it will count. They can vote here at the office or they can take it home and vote and bring it back.
Old business.
So I have something.
Yes, sir.
You guys saw it, you're home, didn't you?
I, you just said you.
Now, I just wanted to touch base with the sheriff's department. So we, two meetings ago, we talked about the sheriffs. I don't know how it came about, but they asked if we wanted to add hours for weekend patrol. We said, we have a contract for extra hours. Take these hours and put them on the weekend. I reached out to sheriff or the sheriff's department. I think I should talk to Lloyd Dean is who I sent the email. I have not gotten a response for, it's been over a week now. So I will reach out to him again and make sure he got the email and see what the, my email pretty much said, can you take these hours that we are allotted per week and use a few of them at your discretion on the weekends? I don't care if it's, you know, I told him, it doesn't really matter how many hours. It's just that presence once in a while on a Saturday or Sunday, it'll slow people down. And I haven't heard from him yet, so I'll reach out to him again.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Laura? New business?
I was going to say, I just want to throw my two cents in. I'm Kevin Hoyd. I go over the mountain. It's snowy mountain tonight too. And I can't believe how blessed you guys are. I want to start with that. The fact that these guys have an open discussion, the vaccines, the pandemic, I do think it's town business for every town across America and it's great. I'll go against Dan. I don't think it's proper for a select board member to advocate one way or the other. But I think it's very, very important to discuss it. Now, it looks like I'm a little late. The floor is not open for debate, so I'm not going to debate anybody. But I came for the science. These guys are obviously good people. I think they're concerned about the community. I think Dan's concerned about the community. That's why he wanted to get that side out. So I'd like to second the motion for debate. None of my officials will ever debate us here in Vermont. So I know Laura Sibilia is involved. We can invite Laura. And I think debate's the wrong word. I think let's have an open, civil conversation about these real things that affect every one of us. And I don't know if you guys can, you know, give us a venue to have that, but I'd like you to reconsider. And again, this is just an open floor because I'm very interested. A lot of the people that we talked about tonight, again, you criticized because they are anti-vaccine from my perspective. You seem pretty pro-vaccine. And again, from our perspective, I think the select board, you're asking us to trust big pharma, big corporation and government. And a lot of people have trouble with that. So I'd love to continue that if you guys are open. Thanks for hearing me.
Okay. Any other new business?
Yeah, I may as well throw this.
Oh, Dan.
Couldn't help it. The first news report I read this morning, the president, national emergency with Russia, okay? And so four or five years ago, I sent a letter out to everybody in town on how to survive nuclear fallout, okay? There's big trouble brewing in Ukraine, their massing troops. I don't like the looks of it. I'm not fear-moderating. But if you don't still have that letter, this I am an expert on. Contact Laura, she's probably still have it. It's very simple procedures, okay? And I just, you know, my conscience would bother me if I didn't mention it, especially when, I think Dan, my last meeting, we left early. One of the people in the meeting asked a question. And I want to bring this question out to you. They asked, what Dan Poffin talks, is it Dan's Poffin's opinion or the board's opinion? So I want to make sure that people understand the board isn't making any decision on what you say. So I want people to understand that. So that question gets answered. So you just answer that. Yes, it is your opinion. No different than when I say. And I think we did cover that at the last meeting. Anything under new business is something somebody brings forward. There's never a vote. There's never a.
You're talking as a civilian.
As a.
And informational things, I'm all for. And I agree that we should, just get the information out there and that's it. We don't want to try to guide people down a certain path. I like the, I like the way we did it tonight where we got information. Got information. You're smart enough to say, oh, I'm going to make a decision whether it's just this information or much more information out there. And we make decisions, whether it's about this subject matter or any subject.
Just a quick, new business is a proper place to bring up a subject that you'd like to be placed on the next agenda. So it has the potential.
Okay, good, okay. No, I don't want to, which I did last.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
Hand it up to.
Helen?
I would just like to point to the fact that new business is supposed to be about business.
Thank you, Helen.
Wish we could open a couple.
And I would like to make a point that the board business is defined very openly within the board.
We make the decision.
Yeah, we decide what's business, how's that? And if you don't, you know, you don't have to agree with me, Helen. You don't even have to get that letter, okay? If a nuke goes off in New York City and you want to run outside and check out how things are going, that's, you know, that's your choice. But this board, as long as I'm on this board, there will be freedom of speech. And you can run against me next year, but I am not going to be silenced at our meeting. This is a select board meeting. Visitors are allowed. We allow all you to speak. That doesn't happen in all towns, you know. I hear, you know, in other towns, I hear rumors, you know, they shut a person down 30 seconds if they don't like what they're saying. We don't do that here.
If there's no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.